I saw where he joined.
I see him now. I think everybody's here.
You don't need that caffeine, Aunt Matthew.
Oh, I definitely do right now. My kids don't need any caffeine downstairs.
That's why you do need it.
Yeah, exactly.
When I get off here, we'll send them some sugar.
My son would eat only sugar if he were allowed to.
We'll call the work session to order and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Cox. I think we have a maybe a rather lengthy work session, so.
Well, good evening, everyone, and I appreciate all the support from Karen, Nave, and our technology folks for setting this up. We are in unprecedented times, I guess is an understatement, but we're very thankful that we're able to carry on the business of Sullivan County Public Schools remotely. And so we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda. The are there any questions about any item on the agenda? We're going to, the bulk of tonight, we need to talk through and about some information that Ms. Deloach is going to lead us through, so. Let me just say anything down to the director's comments of where Ms. Deloach is going to speak. Is there any question on anything down to that?
Let me, let me see the agenda.
Well, this is not current. It's on the, it's on the screen.
So our voting on reading, that's, that's laborist.
Yes, yes. Okay, if not, then I'm gonna, that's what we need to spend the most work session time on, and I'm just gonna ask Ms. Deloach if she will lead us through that part of the agenda.
Sure, I'll be glad to. Let me get to where I can present. The first thing that I have before we start this lengthy discussion is we were talking about the East Pool. You all may remember that there was a problem with the leak at the East Pool. Charlie has gotten an estimate from a repair company. I don't know the terminology you use there, but we need to put that project out for bid. And Chris Davis, our purchasing agent, would like for you to approve us to put that out to bid before we do. With the times, the way they are, we just, it's a pretty sizable project, so. That is included in your agenda, the attachment of the quote that we had. I don't need an official vote. I just kinda need a consensus that we're good with it.
Can everyone see it?
No, I don't have it.
Hold on, I'll see if I can present it on my screen. You should be able to see my screen now. And basically, it's a quote of $175,000. And that is just a quote, and we will receive official bids if you give us the okay.
Ingrid, I will include in this, we had a company back in December because the pool was losing so much water that the heater would not even maintain the water temperature in the pool. So we had a company out of Knoxville that came in and scuba dived down. The bottom of the pool, the drain was not leaking and everything, and they decided it was in the where the return lines are. They were the original galvanized, which means the deck has to be concreted, has to be sawed out and redone, so. You know, I can't guarantee that there's not other problems, but the company, that was their assumption of what it had, and we sent them that quote. And they give us that, this $175,000 quote off of, based on the American Leaking Detection Company that came in and did that, so. Now then, by this coming in such a high cost, we're gonna bid it out. This company here actually was the one that just finished with Viking Hall. There's not many companies that will do this, so I don't know. We might get some more bids, we may not. But it just, it came back extremely high, I thought, so that's why we're going down this road.
Just curious, it makes sense, that's what you're saying, is the 175,000, that was basically their bid? That was what they thought it would be, and we're just having to bid it all the way out completely now because of that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yeah, they, they give the quote of 175,000, and of course, you know, once you get down in it, it could be more, and it's just a quote. But yeah, by being this much, we're gonna have to put this out to a public bid, I feel like, and let them. And then when we get those bids back in, then we'll come back to you and let you decide whether you wanna fix it or not, okay? I just didn't wanna do it on my own, and by this, this high cost, just for a pool, okay?
Well, well, it seems like either way, we need to figure it out. Would you agree with that part, Charlie?
Yes, I do, yeah. We need to get a better handle and see if there's another company, but so far, this is the only company in several hundred mile radius that anybody knows about that specializes in pools, okay?
Okay.
But that's not to say that somebody might not come back in and do it, and I think probably 15 years ago, they replaced some of the lines, but the line going from the pool over to the big main return line, which I think at one time, from what I'm gathering, was PVC. They put PVC, why they didn't do it all at one time, I don't know. But they didn't do a pressure test, the company that come in and tested, because they was afraid they might blow out the line more than what they did, so this is what they have determined based on their analysis that they done with it.
Well, and if we're kinda giving you the go-ahead, you're just trying to investigate at this point to see, I mean, we're not obligated just because we put it out for bid, right?
No, none whatsoever, no. And when I get those bids back in, I will, I will bring them back to you all, because I will not make that decision on my own, okay?
Just to clarify, we are just seeking a consensus to collect the bids and then bring them to you for your consideration.
May I speak? Yeah, I am. I'm trying to turn it down here. Charlie, if this is the only company within several groups, sorry. If this is the only company within several hundred mile radius, who, who do you think we're gonna bid out to?
We'll send it out. There's a website that it goes out, and I'm gonna try to contact some more municipalities and other schools, maybe even some colleges. I'm sure there's gotta be somebody in toward Roanoke and maybe over toward Charlotte, so I'm hoping to get you know, this is just only local people I can find that have ever used this, so. I just wanna do some more research and search and not just rely on this one quote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, is everybody okay for us to collect bids, or let me ask, does anybody have any objection to that? Okay, all right, then if not, Ms. Deloach, if you could go ahead and, and begin.
Sure, so I'll jump into the bulk of what I have for tonight, and that's to explain the weighted full-time equivalent average daily attendance. And there's been some confusion, and anytime there's confusion, we'd like to try our best to clarify it, so. I'm gonna try my best to explain this. It's a very complicated situation. And I don't expect you to understand it very easily. I don't really understand it very easily, and the only reason I can understand as much as I do is because I've dealt with it for years. But this is something that causes a lot of confusion, but hopefully we can maybe get a little clarification or not, so. As I go through this, if you have questions, feel free to try to get my attention. Doing this through Google Meet is a little different than sitting there in the office, so. I will say I miss our face-to-face interactions. I'm gonna present now the PowerPoint. So you'll hear a lot of terms, acronyms for lots of things. So the first, the main two topics for funding are ADM and ADA. ADM is Average Daily Membership or Enrollment. And ADA is Average Daily Attendance. Those two are not the same number, however, they affect each other. And both numbers affect our, our funding at different levels. In the general fund, we have mainly local revenues and state revenues. Local revenues are comprised of property tax and sales tax, then you have other miscellaneous taxes and fees, but those are the two main ones. Those are allocated to us by the city-county split, which is based off of the weighted full-time equivalent average daily attendance. The other piece is state revenues. The main portion of our state revenues is funded through the BEP formula. That's the Basic Education Program. We've had several discussions on that. Basic means just that. It's the very basic. It's basically set up for one system with one school in each county. And when you have multiple systems, you have multiple schools at different grade levels, it's not set up for that. But that's how we get most of our state revenues. That BEP formula is based on the weighted average of average daily membership. And they take four accounting periods, or attendance periods, and they average that out with a weighted average, and we'll get into that in just a little bit, but. That's how we get most of our funds in the general fund. It's either local revenues or state revenues. So what in the world is an attendance period? All systems across the state have to report through the EIS system, the membership and attendance in 20-day reporting periods. We actually report those daily, and they are comprised, they take those first 20 days, and that's the first 20-day accounting period. Second 20 days, and so on and so forth, so. Those are used, they report membership and attendance. Those reports are used to calculate the ADM and the ADA. And there's different weights to both of those, so let me first show you what a 20-day attendance report looks like that I get. This is our most, most recent one, and Nicole Wolf presents these to us. We get daily reports, and then we get 20-day reports, so this is the most recent 20-day report that I've received. You can see this is attendance. It's got ADA at the top. It's got ADM. It'll show you percentage of attendance for each school. Then it also shows each school by grade level, their membership or enrollment for that time period. So that's a a summary of the report that she has to give to the state. And that just looks nice and pretty so we can understand it. She has a very complicated system that she enters all that through, but and that's just the summary of how she puts all that in there. So Nicole sends those in, and then they, the state takes all those reports and puts them in their weighted average. I do not have their official worksheet for the weighted average of average daily membership, but I can show you what I use to get mine in there. For ADMs, they use accounting period, or attendance periods two, three, six, and seven. And so we'll take the total of those periods, and there's a weighted average added to that, so this one may be 25%. This one may be 35%. This one may be 15%. Those percentages are used to calculate the overall weighted average daily membership. And that's what funds the BEP formula. Now, the weighted full-time equivalent average daily attendance number, that calculation is unbelievably complicated. And this is an official document from the state, is how they use our numbers. You can see at the top, they go by grade bands. They put a weight to it, and they get an average. That's for the, just the basic grade levels. Then they take CTE, and they do all the different categories of CTE, put a weight to it. And then they finally get Sullivan County's weighted full-time equivalent average daily attendance. So just our numbers are used in this spreadsheet to get our total WFTE ADA. So it's not just a straight one-to-one there. You've got lots of weights and lots of different categories. This document will show you the history, and it's been referred to in some news documents. This goes back to 1977, but kinda wanna show you how it affected us this year. Our number for 1920, just Sullivan County's number, was 10,793. You can see there that Bristol, Kingsport, and Johnson City schools are also listed there, and they combined to make that total. So of our ADA number from last year to this year, we lost 303 students. You can also see that Bristol and Kingsport also lost, which is not normal for both of those systems. Kingsport's usually gaining, but something happened, and they lost again this year. Johnson City did gain a few.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The 303 students, is that weighted students, or is that actual ADA or ADM?
This is, all this is weighted. It's all the weighted full-time equivalent.
Okay, thank you.
We obviously didn't have 10,793 students enrolled, but the weighted attendance average was 10,793, so we didn't actually lose 303 students. We lost that in the ADA, the weighted ADA. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so they take all these numbers, Sullivan County, Bristol, Kingsport, Johnson City, and get a total. And then we're given, our funding is determined by whatever percentage of this total that we have, so. For 1819, we were at 45.48. 1920 will be at 45.12. You can see, this number's been thrown around as well. We lost .36% in the weighted full-time equivalent city-county split. So there's a little bit of difference between our actual attendance number, our weighted attendance number, and the city-county split. You can also see that Bristol lost in that split. But that split's gonna add up to 100%. So if we lose, somebody's gonna gain. So the net change should be zero. I don't wanna fly through this, because I know it's super complicated. But I also don't wanna just sit and so of our 11,096 that we had in 1819, this year, we're 303 less. Obviously, that's more than the .36% if you just do our totals. The .36% is what we lost in the overall city-county split.
So you can, you can, I think this is the big misconception, and I wanna make sure I understand it. You could gain students as a system based on the weighted full-time equivalency, but lose in the split if the others gained more, correct?
That's right. Yeah, anytime somebody else gains, we lose, unless we gain more than they did.
Right, and you could lose, and in theory, if other people lost more, then you could still gain in the percentage, right?
Correct, because you can look at Kingsport, who lost four students, but yet they still gained in the percentage, because they lost less than the rest of us.
Right.
That's exactly right. So these are moving targets that you're kinda shooting in the dark at the front end to see where you're gonna be. We can usually predict our numbers very well, but I would have never predicted that Bristol City Schools would lose 186 ADA.
I, I just thought it was real important for Ms. Deloach to kinda go through this, because it is so confusing, and like I said before, the, the terms enrollment and ADA kinda get used synonymously, and they're really not. So you have to stop and, and think about this each time, so I hope this is helpful.
It, it is, and one thing that seems to be apparent from that chart is that if you look at the total number of students in the right-hand column in the past 13 years, I mean, but for a short period in 13, 14, 14, 15, the Sullivan County, in other words, all four, if you count the portion of Johnson City School Systems, lost total students, correct? I mean, they're all negative except for two school years out of 13.
Right.
I mean, because you start at 26,000, and now we're down to 23,900.
Yeah, if you roll it up in 1978, I think it said 36,000 students. We've lost 13,000 over that time.
Right, and that, that kinda corresponds with the PIFAS, I may be saying the wrong acronym, but the study back all the way to 2001 that showed a lot of different demographic reasons why our region's population is declining, and if you go on the resources, for instance, I'm sure Mr. Flannery looks at with CTE and jobs, our region projected population is declining in Sullivan County, especially compared to neighboring regions such as Washington County.
Ingrid, our losses by themselves was 2.7, correct?
Yes.
So just to I guess reiterate, this is, it's very confusing, because the, the terms enrollment and ADA are not synonymous, but they're often considered that. And, and we thought it was really important to clarify that the actual percentage loss was 2.7. The .36 loss figure is a calculation in the city-county split, so all of the, those numbers add up to zero. Ms. Deloach, you might wanna just spend a minute to talk about that part of it. That might help with understanding too.
Okay. Well, I can get my computer cooperating. Okay. I think ET's gonna appear any second. You can look and see on this over on the right-hand side where everybody's lost, except for Johnson City. Obviously, 303 students is much more than .36% of 10,793. The figure of .36 was actually what we lost in the city-county split. Excuse me, but our percentage of average daily attendance, just for our numbers, was much greater than that. When we go down to the total overall city-county split, all these changes have to net to zero. So where we lost that percentage in the overall total, we have a loss, Bristol has a loss, and then you have a gain for Kingsport and Johnson City. That nets to zero.
Right, because that, doesn't that go to the point, like I said, you can lose students and you can gain in the split, and that Kingsport example is the perfect one, because they lost students, but they gained in the split, because we have to make, in other words, like if it was a pizza, you gotta make the whole pizza, and the, and the pizza is Sullivan County.
Right. Right. All systems in Sullivan County, and now we're up to four, so. If you've got four kids, and one of them gets a bigger piece, and somebody's gonna get a smaller piece if you just have one pizza to divide up.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Deloach? I, I know this is complicated information, but I, again, I thought it was really important to, for, for us to work through it.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to get a copy of the one sheet she showed, showing every school and each grade breakdown, and I think that was either ADA or ADM. It wasn't weighted, I don't believe. But if I could get a copy of that, and maybe like the same time period from a year ago, that would be great.
I think I shared those with you a couple of months ago, but I'll be glad to share them again.
Well, no, if you, let me go back and look then. If you haven't, I apologize. I'll take a look back.
That's okay. Just let me know if you didn't get it.
I certainly will. Yeah, I won't bother you if I got it. Thank you.
I wanted to kinda explain to you how we go through the budgeting process for that. Each year, we have to look at that city-county split number, and we have to predict what we think's gonna happen. So for local revenues, we got a budget where we think that's gonna be. The things that I look at when I try to consider where we're gonna estimate, I obviously use that worksheet to see where we've lost historically, or if we've had a gain. I've not seen that yet, but if we were to ever have a gain, we'd have to put that in there too. We looked at consolidation of schools. Lots of people were talking that if we built Sullivan East Middle School, we would lose enrollment. That obviously didn't pan out. We gained enrollment, so. But we have to look at that. That has to be a factor. This year, we'll have to look at economic conditions. People may be moving out of our area to find a job. They could be, they could be moving in the area. If there was some kind of industry that was to come, they could move in, so we may have to think about that, but this is an unprecedented year for budgeting what we're gonna do there, so. That's one thing that we'll have to add in that one. There's several factors, but we can only look at Sullivan County numbers. I have no way of predicting Bristol City. I don't know what their programs are, but. I do work very closely with Becky Adams, who is the Finance Director for Bristol City, and David Fra, who is the Finance Director for Kingsport City, and we try our best to make sure that we are matching up when we budget. So those are things that we all look at. Obviously, Kingsport, Bristol, and Johnson City numbers influence that split, and you can see that in that worksheet. And we just talked about if they gain, we lose automatically, even if we don't lose any students. The bad part about the city-county split is, we're trying to predict that in March and April of the previous year. And then we won't get the city-county split until March of that year, so right now, I'm predicting city-county So right now, I'm predicting city-county split for twenty twenty-one, and we won't get that number, official number, until February or March of twenty twenty-one. But they're going to adjust all of our revenues back to July the first of twenty twenty. So when we just received that city-county split, all of our revenues that we have collected so far this year will be adjusted back to that rate, back to July the first. So we'll cruise along just fine because we know what that is right now, but until we get to that February, March timeframe, that's when we feel the crunch. When they make that adjustment, um, it affects us pretty drastically. That's for local revenues. For state revenues, the BEP formula, it's based on the average daily membership of the previous year. So when we're getting our estimates, and I've got a copy of the estimate right here, when we're getting our estimate, it is actually coming in with nineteen, twenty numbers, but they are estimating for twenty twenty-one. So, um, we know what our numbers are for attendance periods two, three, six, and seven, and we can kind of anticipate that. That's a little bit easier to budget. There's not as many factors because it's dealing with concrete data from this current year that we're in that we've already experienced. But the local revenues are extremely hard to predict, and we always try to do that conservatively so that we don't come down to February or March of that accounting year and have to scramble because we don't have enough money because of the city-county split. So we had budgeted a two percent loss in city-county split, and obviously, we didn't recognize that, um, which is a good thing for us and the county. However, if it had been more than two percent, we could be in serious budget issues, um, cash flow and everything, because they're going to take all that back to July the first and readjust our revenues. So, um, that's kind of where we're at with the budget and the debate over ADM and ADA.
But for clarification, Ingrid, to the extent we were wrong, was the fact that Bristol lost so many. Is that correct?
If Bristol had not lost, we, our percentage loss would have been much greater. And heaven forbid they had gained. If they had gained, it's a double whammy on us if they gain. Yes, you're exactly right. If we had, if they had done historically what they normally do, then, yeah, we would have been right at two percent.
Well, wasn't it two point seven if, if they had been historically about the same?
Yeah, you're looking at, they usually gain around a hundred. So, yeah, that would be right.
To kind of, I'm sorry, whoever it is, you go ahead if they want to.
Uh, Ingrid, if we underestimate our local revenues, at the end of the year, we have to take that out of fund balance, do we not?
Correct.
Thanks.
And, and to kind of break it down, how hard your job and all school systems in Tennessee's are the way our funding's set up, you have to project a year out basically because of the timing of when we're getting these weighted averages just for your county. And so that's one step in the process, and that's hard enough in and of itself. But then you also have to try to project what, in our instances, for school systems, gains and losses are going to be to see what your split is at the local level as that second step, right?
That's right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Go ahead.
The sheet you showed just a second ago where it showed the losses and that weighted average the, the last few years, the year just before that, we still went down three hundred, and Bristol and Kingsport both went up. What was the difference in the split in that one? How much did it change?
Well, let's see. If I would quit opening the same file multiple times, it would work a lot easier. Let's look right here. So in the previous year, we lost right at one percent. And I believe Bristol gained ninety? Yeah, ninety. Forty-four.
Randall makes a great point, though, if our job is to advocate for Sullivan County School System, is if we underestimate that loss, we have to, we have to eat it, in other words, out of money from somewhere else, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Ingrid, if, if Sullivan County loses students to Kingsport, that's almost a double hit, is it not, on the funding? Because they gain and we lose with the same student. Likewise, with Bristol, if they take one of our students, it's a double whammy for us.
That's right. That's right. And we have seen that in the past, but we're not seeing that anymore. Um, our students are moving all over the country, not just to the city of Kingsport. They're going everywhere. So obviously, Kingsport lost this time, so, um, our students are not going to the city of Kingsport.
Right, but if Kingsport and Bristol, if they have a tuition charge and students leave us and pay tuition and go to them, then we lose funding, and they gain funding, and it's a double hit with that move, is it not?
Yeah, they gain funding from the state and the local as well as getting tuition. So it's a, it's a win for them, but it's a definite double whammy for us.
Thanks.
Matthew, could you repeat something you said in the last meeting? And I, I was, uh, I tried to do a little research on it about how they may go back and average the last three years. I, I don't.
Uh, are you, you referencing under the, I guess they're referring to it as the CARES Act now? The federal funding?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I can't cite you to the specific thing, but I, as it was passing through and it had passed the Senate already, there was reference to that the funding level for the local school system, and part of that would be keeping people employed, would have to, if you average out the past three years, they couldn't decrease it. In other words, the way I read what they were proposing at the federal level was similar to a maintenance of effort type requirement for the whole school system. And, and I guess my reading of that was just so that way federal dollars that were given out couldn't supplant local and state dollars. In other words, they would have to be at the same level.
So it could, it could work out that since sales tax is going to be down and maintenance of efforts changes, it could be, it could work out that we get an average of the last three years. Is that accurate?
I, I mean, I, I don't want to guarantee that because I, I would say that you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody in the country that's read the entire bill that they probably passed at the federal level, and, and they pass new ones weekly now. But the way I read it was the intent and purpose was to kind of average out those passed historically so that way you couldn't just take a handout from the upper level without continuing to fund your, in other words, so public school students couldn't lose out, um, at the state and local level and just decide, we're not going to fund at the state and local level. We're just going to use federal money this year.
That's the way I read it. I just wanted to hear you say that again. I thought about that a lot after, after you said that last month.
And, and I mean, it makes sense, at least from my perspective, being on the public school board. I mean, you don't want, uh, we're all in a hard time right now, but you don't want your local community to decide, we're going to take those federal dollars and allocate them somewhere else. In other words, because we're not going to fund at the same level, we're deciding something else is more important than our public school students.
Thank you.
That's all that I have for city-county split agreement.
Okay, does any other board member have a question for Mr. Loach?
Let me ask one more question. The resolution that passed this past year by the Sullivan County School Board and by the County Commission was basically a safety net, was it not? That said if we exceeded the one percent, then there would be additional money coming from the county. If we did not exceed that one percent, then we would not get that additional money. So this allowed us not to have to take any more money out of the fund balance. Am I correct in my assessment on that, Ingrid?
That's correct, and it was a safety net. Um, and that helped us because if we had lost more than two percent, then we would have been in trouble. But with that resolution, it allowed us to be able to rest assured that we wouldn't have to come up with funding at the end of the year.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, anyone else? If not, I would like to jump back, and Mr. Flannery, uh, wanted to present some information about the, um, survey. So we'll turn it over to him, and then, um, Mr. Flannery, if you can present your screen.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Is it, you all tell me, is it working? I feel like it's not working.
It came up and it went back down.
Okay, we'll try something else then.
Hey, Aaron, it's showing it. You just need to click on your presentation, I think.
Okay. All right, so while I'm waiting this to come up.
If not, I can do it for you.
Okay. I went ahead and emailed this graphic to everybody on the board, along with lead team, so you could always reference this graphic later. So, um, kind of go over the results of the survey with you all. We ended up having over a thousand respondents. And then Tommy took out all the outliers or people who didn't complete the survey. Ended up being nine hundred fifty-seven valid votes. And what I did is I broke down the results, giving you the subgroups and, uh, the top five of each subgroups. And then I gave you overall ranking of the actual survey itself of how all the programs that we had on the survey, were ranked, and you kind of see the one through the twelve on the right side. You know, we were trying to target seven or eight of those programs to be what we adopt and move forward with, you know, trying to, you know, offer, offer those opportunities at West Ridge when we get there. Um, and one thing to kind of make note of is there's definitely some differences between what students wanted and what parents and the adults wanted in the survey, um, but there are also some similarities. And the good thing about what did come out of the rankings, the one through eight, seven or eight, is that they're a good mixture and very diverse. You know, we're looking at programs that lead to a job out of high school, looking at ones that need two degrees, and looking at ones that need four years or more, and with a nice balance. And, um, there's only a couple that will have pretty big ticket when it comes to startup program, you know, getting the program up and running, the monies it takes to do that, but the other ones are, uh, very manageable and very doable, especially with the equipment that we already have in our three high schools that we're consolidating. So, uh, overall, I was very pleased with the results and what the outcomes were. They also aligned with a lot of what the area needs are based on data, you know, based on Tennessee School Board Association's dashboard about job growth, job market, job demand. So, uh, and also a nice mixture of a partnership with Northeast State. There are several programs that align with theirs that students can just, um, you know, graduate from our program, move on to their program, finish up the two-year degree and go to work. So, um, just a really nice balance. I was very pleased with the outcome. So I know that was a lot of information thrown at you, so if you've got any questions, feel free to ask, but know that you do have that graphic. You can always, even after this meeting, some other time if you, you know, revisit and have some questions, feel free to reach out to me, but I'll be glad to entertain any questions that anybody has about the graphic or the survey.
Were, were there any given that you know more about this than we do? Were there any that you felt like were right on the edge of being in the top eight or nine that you think, in looking at the demographics and all the data that you have access to, that we should really consider over just a popular vote?
Right, exactly. There are two programs that actually stand out, and great point, Mr. Faby. The, the Mecatronics, basically, you know, industrial maintenance, you know, and if you want to work in a manufacturing facility, you, you need, you're going to need this knowledge, and it's maybe number nine. Um, you know, other CTE schools, especially, you know, top-ranked ones around the country, like I got to go see LCTI up in Pennsylvania, and they had a huge Mecatronics lab, and, uh, they think it's the basis for anybody who wants to go to work in manufacturing. So that's one that I definitely, you know, it's ninth, would like to see move up, and based on not only need, and I think if we want to be a manufacturing, um, you know, system, as I'm saying, like Sullivan County, and we're thinking about the Aerospace Park and things like that. I mean, I think that only makes sense to have a program that teaches students how to work in a, in a manufacturing setting. And the other one is actually the one that came in last, marketing, came in twelfth. You know, that's one that's in our top five growth areas. That's one that has good median wages. Um, it's one that, you know, everything needs marketing, so, uh, but it didn't seem to be very popular with the vote, but definitely, definitely I feel like it needs to be considered as we move forward, maybe moving up the list, uh, just based on its, its ability to intermingle in several different industries. You know, marketing is in every industry, just like HR. So, um, it'll be, it'll be two, two programs I'd like to see us, even though they didn't make the top eight, but, you know, maybe be in, still in the running just because it's, might be a best-skined one.
So you said there's, that we're actually looking, pulling forward? Is that what the number is?
Well, if we want to try to target that twenty-nine to thirty programs that we've been advertising, you know, we, that's, that's kind of a rat. We never really set that in stone. We just want to know, you know, what, what do, where we want to go if we do have the opportunity in the shop space and the classroom space and the resources, and we can find a teacher. I mean, so there were a lot of, you know, determining factors. But this gives us kind of a, you know, a guide and, or steers us in the right direction.
Is space the most limiting factor, or is it money at each other if you do programs?
I'm sorry, Mr. Faby, can you hear to repeat that?
Is space the most limiting factor, or is it, uh, the cost of the CTE programs?
Really, three, three factors. Space, is any dedicated space, because one thing, West Ridge is going to be a very flexible campus. Uh, we're going to be dedicated space because there's only so much space that we can dedicate to programs. The other one is, um, quality of teacher, or can we find a teacher that's willing to teach the program? A lot of these industries, people are making a lot more money than being what they'd make in education, so it's hard to recruit. You know, just, I think about the automation and/or even cybersecurity. You know, if you're actually doing that as a job, you're making more money than, you know, than people as a teacher. But there are also people out there that want the flexible, or want to set schedule with their children, you know, they want to try something different, so. And then, uh, really, there's three factors. Space, how much does it cost to get the program started, and then can we find a qualified candidate to teach it?
One of those programs we're talking about, working directly with Northeast State, have been having teachers or even helping kids go to their campus? Or was it all the teachers coming to our campus?
It'll be a mixture of both. We'll have Southeast State adjuncts coming to our campus. We'll also have some of our teachers credentialed, and we'll be employees of both Northeast State like we currently do. And really, you know, that's, that's one thing, machine tours, you know, they'll be able to get the basics in our shop, but then time they're senior, they're going to Northeast State to finish up in the machine shop in Northeast State's campus.
Aaron. Wow. I can't remember if mapping was on the, uh, survey, uh, but that's something almost, oops, every area. Was that a, was that a consideration?
We had GIS on one of the surveys. It didn't seem to give enough footing for, to make it to the survey. But the purpose is to hopefully move that GIS program from part-time to full-time in the future at Sullivan East. So, you know, students at West Ridge might have an interest in GIS. you know, students at West Ridge might have an interest and GIS could go to East and vice versa.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
All right. No more questions. I'll stop the presentation mode. But like I said, if you look at this anytime you've got it in your email, you can revisit this and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime.
Okay. Does, does anyone have any questions, uh, for Mr. Flannery? Okay, well, it's just about time, uh, just looking at the other items that are on the, uh, business meeting agenda. Uh, we have several policies that are up for second reading. I just call your attention. We do have a couple of issues that we're asking for the board to, uh, consider, uh, this evening. Um, concerning, uh, some actions that the state board had taken. Uh, it's in the form of a resolution, uh, in order for our students to graduate. Uh, and, and to, um, uh, recognize the difference in our policies where they make conflict with the current guidance on the state board. So I assume everybody's had an opportunity, uh, to take a look at that and, and, uh, uh, we'll, we'll, we're asking the board to consider that, uh, and, and to, um, uh, approve that on, for, on one reading, which would be the policy five point three oh, that's the FF-CRA leave and then the resolution, uh, would be to temporarily suspend the policies due to COVID nineteen. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I had, uh, for the work session.
Thank you. If you want to look forward to May, we're looking at, uh, May the seventh for our meeting. We'll have our workshop at four and our regular meeting at six thirty. Keeping in mind that we could have a special call meeting, uh, depending on the sale of the school. Could be a little bit before that or a little bit after, but, uh, everyone look at your schedules and see how that works. If everyone's okay with that, we'll kind of pencil that in and if something unforeseen happens, we can always adjust like we did this month.
I'm sorry, Mike. Did you say two times or is it put it together again? I, I missed that. I'm sorry.
Um, four o'clock for the, uh, workshop and six thirty for the, uh, regular meeting.
Both on May the seventh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, uh, we actually have a separate meeting for the business meeting. Do you want to go right into, did you want to take a few minutes break before we go into the business meeting? Uh, that's going to require by the log out of this meeting and sign on to the new one.
Are we going to review the rating, our items for second reading or have we gotten that?
That's in the business meeting. That's the business meeting.
Yeah. Does, does everyone want to take a short break and log back in for the regular business meeting?
Yeah, that'll be fine. I do have one more question on something I'd rather ask here instead of after the, the general meeting.
Go ahead.
The number two there, Dr. Cox's contract renewal. I'm just trying to figure out why we're addressing that. He's only been employed with us for seven months. So I'm just kind of curious why we're looking at something like that.
Well, first of all, uh, he's done an extraordinary job. And, uh, as you. Pardon me?
I said no argument there. I'm just curious why we're looking.
Okay. Uh, other, other factors are that, you know, he moved here from Maryland and still has a house he hasn't sold and, uh, making two mortgages. And, uh, really just wanted to, uh, especially after, you know, the trouble we've had in some of the surrounding areas, uh, wanted to extend the contract. That's, and that's, uh, kind of common. It's really under the same terms as far as raises and so forth, just changes the end date.
Oh, no, I, I understand. Like I say, I, I understand extending contracts and that's, that's fine when you're approaching the end. I was just kind of curious why in seven months we're looking at extending.
Let me rephrase that, Mark. I think extending is a wrong term. I think the word, that renew is, is accurate legally. Any other questions?
No, I just, like I say, I'd rather ask it here instead of in generals. I appreciate it.
That's okay. Anything else? Well, we'll log out and we will. What do you tell me?
I'm not logging out. Are you kidding me?
Let's try to log back in at five fifteen, guys. Is that okay? Everybody okay with that?
Uh, I guess one, one more real quick thing. I'm sorry, Dr. Cox, we talked about that, the field trip money and stuff. Is that still being discussed or what's going on with that? I'd rather ask that instead of general also.
Uh, yes, I, uh, and Ms. Deloach might be able to help me with that. There's been quite a, uh, what Mr. Irson's talking about is, uh, there's, uh, as you know, we had kids that, uh, uh, were planning on field trips and, uh, uh, the question came up about refunding money. What the guidance that we had was we can refine money that um, has been paid, uh, directly by parents, but any fundraising money that, there are some questions about that. That has kind of exploded across the state. We have gotten some additional guidance from the auditors. It's been considered in the compter's office. So Ms. Deloach and I are in receipt of that. What we are, uh, proposing to do, since it's an issue that pertains to so many different school systems, is that, um, I expect that we might get some, uh, policy, uh, uh, information recommending some policy changes, uh, from T S B A. So it, it's looking more favorable that we might be able to loosen that up a little bit and refund some money. We just got to be square with the auditors and not, uh, do anything that's going to put us, um, uh, with an audit funding. Ms. Deloach, any, uh, fu- further comments on that?
No, I need to apologize because I was supposed to address that in my presentation and I forgot all about it, but it is going through the compter's office and I fully expect T S B A to issue something because this is something that we have never experienced before in this magnitude. And I believe every district in the state will have this problem. So, um, I believe sitting back and letting T S B A handle it and that way we can follow what everybody else in the state's doing would be a great idea.
I like it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll see everybody at five fifteen.